Parents are in charge.
At this point of our meeting, we are at our Audience of Citizens. I do have the sign-in list that was out front for those who chose to sign in. There is a statement that I need to read just to clarify the purpose of Audience of Citizens, if you'll bear with me. It's a time for public comment to inform the Board about your views on matters before this Board. It is a time for the Board to receive information, not a time to discuss or debate, answer questions, or for the Board to take action on any issues presented. We cannot legally, nor would we discuss, an issue of a specific employee or student in respect to privacy. If your comments pertain to a personnel issue or student, we have the correct channels in place for those issues by contacting District Office Administration. Please remember that our meetings are streamed live on our Boone County YouTube channel. The Board does not record meetings, but the meetings are saved on YouTube and comments may be included in our meeting minutes. We welcome your views and comments concerning matters before the Board, but the Board Chair retains the discretion to manage comments to ensure that they flow efficiently and that Board business is not disrupted or impeded. Please state your name for the record before you begin speaking. If you have a concern that you would like a response from the Administration, please leave your name and contact information on the form at the table as you exit. We will have an administrator contact you to address those concerns. In order to make sure that everyone is heard that would like to speak, there will be a two-minute time limit during the Audience of Citizens. If you share the opinion of another, you may just say, "I agree with the opinion of," and state whose opinion you are agreeing with. We do ask that you not clap or speak over people during the meeting. Expressions of opinion of this type, whether positive or negative, are intimidating to others and may lead to the suppression of free speech or impede the Board from doing our business. We thank you for your understanding.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr.
Madam Chair, if I just may, I just want to be sure that we may possibly have employees that may wish to speak in the Audience of Citizens as well, and certainly that's their right. I just want to remind any employees speaking that we must all be very cautious not to publicly speak about students and ensure that we don't violate any state or federal privacy laws by sharing any confidential information in a public setting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. I'm going to read these names in threes, so as I call your name, please come to the microphone. Again, make sure you give us your name so that we can have that information if we need to reach out to you. And if I mispronounce anyone's name, I apologize in advance.
... equipped with an amazing staff. They have the skills to handle specific needs of all kids who attend. Why not any other Boone County high school where the... Anything but Connor, where the very people who were threatened won't have their education negatively affected? Where is their unrestricted learning environment?
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Krista Wayne Scott.
Hi, my name is Krista Wayne Scott. I live in Hebron at 1695 Granville Drive. In 2021, there were 93 school shootings with casualties, according to the indicators of school crime and safety. This is the highest number in 20 years. Numbers have nearly quadrupled since the year 2000. I have the Kentucky Department of Education report in front of me, the annual Safe Schools Report, that shows a significant spike in violent behaviors in the last five years. If ever there was a time to look at red flags, that would be now. The studies show that 95% of current students... The studies show that of the students who committed these violent acts, 95% of them were current students in that school. 73% gave a detailed description of how they were going to execute those attacks, check. 57% documented some of their thoughts and intentions regarding those planned attacks, check. 94% shared their intentions about carrying out an attack, check. If ever there was a time to pay attention to those red flags, that time is now. I know that students are entitled to a free and public education. However, when a student exhibits these red flag behaviors, they need an alternative placement to keep every other student safe. The placement of students is determined by Mr. Turner, and it is completely negligent to place a student exhibiting these red flags with our children at Connor High School. The placement of these students should never violate the safety and well-being of other students, staff, and administrators. In closing, I'd like to say that I have nothing but belief in every teacher and administrator at Connor High School, but I am calling 100% into question this decision to place this violent student at Connor High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wayne Scott.
Hi, I'm Karen Strayer, and I wish to pass the time for right now.
Pass your time, okay. Who are you passing your time to?
Myrna Eads.
Myrna Eads, okay. Okay. Ms. Eads, you are next on the list, followed by James Crusby and Kathleen Chapman.
My name is Myrna Eads, and I'm with Moms for Liberty. And first off, I'd like to say that Moms for Liberty is not about banning books, but I want to bring insight into some of the books that are found in our school libraries, including several Boone County middle schools and high schools. And in the coming weeks, Moms for Liberty will be submitting book reviews to each of those schools. Some of the books that are in your schools have to deal with child rape, prostitution, normalizing abortions. One book in particular, it's called Skye by Neil Schusterman, talks about two teenagers who have to learn how to kill people in our society that they feel are not purposeful in our society. And when we start dehumanizing members of society, that they're not productive, and we start normalizing abortion, and we start normalizing rape of a child, and we start normalizing prostitution, what we're doing is dehumanizing the public. Another book that is in your school is called Kite Runner, and this is... I won't read it since you guys are live on YouTube and there's children in the audience, but it's explicit sexual activities, including sexual assault and battery prostitution involving minors and adults, explicit violence and mild profanity. Some of the material that are in these books, I have landed in Facebook jail because it violates community standards. Yet, it is allowed in our schools where children are all under the age of 18 years old age. How does knowing how to perform sexual acts, masturbate, rape of a child, abortion, and kill those who are less worthy in our society benefit anyone? Some people think our children will get a hold of this information through the Internet, and for most, that is true. But then again, we have parents who have parental controls on...
Excuse me, Ms. Eads, can we reset the time for her additional two minutes? Thank you.
Thank you. We have parents who have firewalls on their Internet in their homes, they have parental controls, they teach morals and ethics to their children. So for the school to say they are our kids is not entirely true. They're our kids as well, and as taxpayers, we need to be mindful of what kind of books are in our libraries. When people are talked about as objects, again, this leads to dehumanization, which leads to more and more violence. Just look at all the disciplinaries happening in every school in our state. Kids don't respect authority, and they don't respect each other. Like I said, in the coming weeks, Moms for Liberty will be submitting book reviews of the books that we find in your libraries. And I would like to see the school board review their policy on how books are approved to be in our school libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eads. Mr. Crusby.
Hi, my name's Jim Crusby, and I'm a parent of Connor High School. Mr. Turner and I have had a lengthy discussion on the phone about my concerns, and I appreciate you reaching out to me with my concerns. Ms. Byrd, Dr. Brown, back when you all were on the school board, Mr. Turner sent out a letter about how his unwavering... He's against any unwavering things that make such threats, including students, terroristic threatening. Remember that in August of 21? Signed by you, right?
I'm not quite sure exactly what you're referring to.
A letter that says, "Dear parent and guardian, our most important function in Boone County schools is to provide the safest learning environment possible for all of our students and school staff members." Terroristic threatening in the state of Kentucky, KRS 508078.
I know what you're reading now.
Right? Because when you and I talked, you referenced statute. So me being a nice scholarly person, I went and reviewed some of these statutes. And what I can't understand is KRS 158.150, suspension or expulsion of pupils. You said you went by statute, right? The school board went by statute. Ms. Byrd, Dr. Brown, no less than one year. I was under the impression that you said one year, but it says no less than one year, right? So you could have expelled this student longer than one year. You could, right? But I'm going to go off on a little bit more things of the information. I'm more concerned about the safety, not only of my kids, but also of the student that you placed back in the environment that triggered these thoughts for him to write on a piece of paper.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Chapman. I have a son at Connor High School. And I have to agree with the parents. I wasn't coming here today to talk about that, but this child's right does not supersede the other children's rights. If you have a child that has made threats to students, they should not be allowed to come back and scare and intimidate these other kids. But that's not why I'm here today. I'm actually here today because I would like to ask a question of the Board. I'm here for the resource officers. Are resource officers, are they in our schools to protect our students, or are they there to police our students? And I have the Code of Conduct Handbook here, and in this Code of Conduct Handbook, it has all the rights and responsibilities of our students, our teachers, our administrators. In the Code of Conduct Handbook, it has nothing about the resource officers. How are they supposed to be interacting with our kids? And as a parent, I have no information on how these resource officers are interacting with my child. I want to know, are they there to protect my child, or are they there to police my child? And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Next up, we have Deanna Corbin, followed by Karen Wells, followed by Melissa Huff.
Hi, my name is Deanne Corbin, and I live in Hebron and am a parent of two students at Connor High School. Just like all the other sentiments that have been given here tonight, I agree 1,000% with all of the parents that are voicing their concerns. This isn't a personal attack against this student. I really, really, really do hope that he is getting and has gotten the professional help that he needs. However, I think that history has proven that even after one year and whatever threat or whatever help he has gotten, he is still a threat to be in an environment which fostered him to want to do a mass shooting and make a list of our students at Connor Middle School that are now in Connor High School. It is unfair to the children, the victims, as I call them, that were on this list, for him to be in that school. Whether or not he's in their classroom, they have to know that he is in their building. They know that he walks down the hallway, and they have to pass him. What if they go to the restroom, and he's in the restroom? Lunch, they're constantly looking over their shoulder. I can only imagine what their parents feel. And then you're asking our administrator, whose child was on the list as well, to police this every morning when this child comes into school? And you're... That's not what he's supposed to be doing as a principal. He's supposed to be making sure our kids get an education. I hope that you really, really, really look at this and take it into consideration and find another option for this child. He does not belong in a classroom with my child. I'm not taking that risk. I lived in Colorado when Claire Davis was killed at Littleton High School. Two miles away from that was my kid's elementary school, and they had a lockdown. And I would never, ever, ever want anyone to feel what I felt just knowing that there was a shooter two miles away from my kids. And it's going to be on all of you if something happens.
Thank you, Ms. Corbin.
I'm Karen Wells, and I likewise agree with what has been said. I will say that in reflection, when I found out that this child was returning to Connor High School, I was in shock, and I looked to see what could possibly rational make this the right decision for the most amount of people. I don't think it's the right decision for the Administration. I think it puts an unnecessary burden on Mr. Wykoff with his own son being on that list, that he has to try to be impartial every day, but yet give this kid what he needs. And obviously, this kid needs all of us as a community to get behind him and help him because at one day, he's going to be in our society. I don't think he has a chance for a good education somewhere else in this area because of this widespread and the poor decision that was made. I don't think the teachers, who are already stressed and overworked as it is, should have to undo this when we have two sets of kids, this gentleman and all the people that were on the list, that they have to try to meet their needs. I don't think it was in the good benefit for any of these people. I also am distressed that when I sent out an email last week after I first found out about this, that a lot of the Board members were not even aware of this. So that leads me to believe that I understand Mr. Turner has the decision to make this on his own, that he did make this on his own. And I agree, he probably reviewed other information to make this decision, but the fact that the Board was not involved on a very complex situation as this is was wrong. And I do feel like we have to look at the bylaws and the Administration on how things are moved forward, because this should not be somebody making a decision on their own, even with background information. And like I said, I feel like this kid has been harmed, no matter what the intention was. I don't know where he could go in Boone County, Kenton County, that people don't know him. And we definitely don't want him taking classes just online because he needs to socialize. He's going to be back in the community at some point, and we need to help this kid. Thank you, Ms. Wells.
Next up is Melissa Huff. Is it Jolie Connor and Rob Bottomman? Yeah, if Melissa Huff is not speaking, or Jolie Connor, if I've read that name correctly. Mr. Bottomman, you're next.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I want to start tonight by saying thank you to the Board for the opportunity to speak concerning the threats made against our children at Connor High School. As a father of the child on the active kill list, my statements will reflect my opinion based on the information I received from Connor High School. When I received the call from the principal, it was emotionally devastating. All I could think about was my child in danger when they did nothing wrong. My main question tonight is, the Board of Education in Connor High School done everything possible to ensure the safety of everyone at the school, including my child. I'm speaking for the principal, every student, every teacher, every faculty member, and even the first responders that would be at risk in an active shooting situation. If not, I hope the Board will review and consider every alternative solution for student safety. I trust my statements tonight will help all the Board members understand the substantial number of parents and students living with concern, fear, and anxiety, instead of just the well-being of one student who caused this horrible situation by making death threats against our kids. I pray tonight that this Board and everyone involved will be granted the knowledge and courage to make the tough decisions needed to protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bottomman. Next, we have Steve Rawlings and... I'm sorry, I can't read the first name, but the last name is Wells, Sean Wells, maybe?
So I'm Steve Rawlings. I'm the newly-elected state representative from northern Boone County, includes Hebron, Burlington, Petersburg. I've been appointed to the Education Committee in Frankfurt. So I just want to give parents and school board members opportunity, if you want to send any messages down to Frankfurt, any issues or concerns. I got a call from a parent on this issue tonight, so I was really concerned about that. I wanted to hear more about it. But if you live in Burlington, Hebron, if you want to send something through me, it's a good time. We meet again on February 7th is when we go into session, and we had a preliminary meeting that discussed issues like this, but not specifically this child. But anyway, let me know. I'd be glad to share those. And anybody here who's not in my district, please share that with your state representatives. Now's a good time. It's a couple of weeks before the session starts. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Rawlings. We appreciate that.
My name is Sean Wells. I have a daughter at Connor High School. She's actually in class with the student in question, the kid who made the hit list. I sent a long email to Mr. Turner about this, and he was nice enough to call me back about it. We had a good conversation, but I still do not agree with his decision. In fact, I'm really disappointed in you, Mr. Turner, for apparently making this decision without the knowledge of your Board. I don't know that that's true, but if it is, it's a pretty bad decision. I feel for my daughter's safety. I've been in... We went through the fact of what I did when Mr. Shires was a principal at our elementary school, and we really shook up with Sandy Hook, and this is a big deal. So please involve all these good people and make the right decision. It's a big decision. It shouldn't be just up to you. You're overriding the will of Connor's Administration in doing this, and I think that shouldn't be done lately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. That is all who signed up to speak. If anyone else would like to address the Board, I'll open it. Just state your name, because we don't know who you are.
Oh, not at all. No idea why you would. Hi, my name's Alina McEwen. For those who don't know, I was last year's student Board Representative for the Boone County Board of Education, so I sat where Mr. Hang sat. And Hang, I do want to let you know, just because I always have to whenever I come on these nights, that you are continuing to do a phenomenal job. I am always... I always get red in the face because I'm so proud. So I'm really glad that you were the one who the position was passed on to. So I'm actually here just to speak a little bit about the books situation. I can't say too, too much for the parent's side of things, but I do have a little sibling who is currently at Ignite Institute. I myself was at Ignite Institute, and all of my siblings minus my youngest one have been in the public school system. So I am speaking from a former student and a sibling perspective, and I think it is important to consider, even though it's a hard conversation that we have to have, I think it's really, really important to consider how many of these students have gone through these difficult situations and understand that we, as students, are a lot more mature than most adults take credit for. Many of these students who are reading these books in the library, they know that these situations, these poor situations, can happen. And another issue is that a lot of these books also, some of the books that I've seen from different areas, are on topics such as LGBT students and topics such as sexual assault. But how many students are LGBT? How many students in this district have gone through sexual assault themselves? It's a hard conversation. It's not something we want to hear, but I think it's important that we make sure that we find alternative routes to just outright taking these books off of our shelves. Thank you.
Thank you, Alina. Always good to see you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Just state your name.
My name's Pam Skauf. I have a daughter. She's a senior at Ignite, and I have another daughter who is a freshman at Connor. I just want to reiterate, I just agree with everything that all these parents have said with this child in question. I know that there's been some other threats at Connor High School, and that kind of leads me to call into question, I don't have a thorough understanding of the levels of discipline. I know there's three different levels, the one, two, and three. And I also understand that a terroristic threat threatening a teacher, threatening other classmates is treated on the same level as somebody who brings drugs into the school. And I think that that really needs to be reassessed. I'm not sure who I would need to bring that to, if that's you as the Board, if that's somebody like Mr. Rawlings, but I would like a response to that as well, because I would like to look further into that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Skauf. If you will just get the... Get your information so that someone in the district can respond to you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Awkery Watson. I'm an employee of Boone County and a parent. My daughter attends Connor High School. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I love Boone County. I am the biggest advocate for Boone County, and I love it. But I want you to take this tonight, and I want you to really think about it. If your child was on that list, you would be up here fighting for your child. No matter what, you would do what you think is best for your child. So I want you to put yourself in our spot and think about what our children are going through every single day. So I want you to walk away with that tonight. Be us. Be us, and think about why we're here. We're here because we love Connor High School. We love the school. We love Boone County, and we want our kids to be safe.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Anyone else?
My name is Daniel Campbell, and I have two daughters at Connor High School, and I completely agree with what Ms. Wayne Scott and Ms. Murray, I should know you, we know each other for years, said. You guys need to be responsible and keep our kids safe. Our kids are not going to be at risk. It is your responsibility, it is on your shoulders, to keep our children safe. If there is a predator in that school, and it's a bomb waiting to happen, this is not okay. If it were your children, just like Mrs. Watson said, you would be at this microphone too, protecting your children. We are calling you to be responsible and to do the right thing. You cannot turn a blind eye to this. There is violence in the school. People are being killed, and that is not okay. We have got to put a stop to it. And you as the Board of Education at Boone County, I love Boone County, I love Connor High School. Mr. Wykoff is amazing, and I am so grateful for the teachers and the staff at Connor High School. They are wonderful, and they are working hard to protect our kids, but you have to protect them. You are responsible.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Hello there. My name is Ava Meesh. I am a just... I just graduated from Boone County High School and Ignite Institute together, so I guess I will be going through this shooter thing from my perspective, which is, when I first went to Ignite Institute, I was incredibly happy by it, and it... Most of the area itself is made out of like glass, so the door is a very open space. And though it looks very beautiful and it seems very lovely to all the students, I looked at all my friends that I soon made, we smiled at each other and whispered, "Man, if a shooter was here, we'd be dead really quickly." Because it is something that's become so locked into our minds. Because it is something that's become so locked into our minds. It's become a joke, the idea of our deaths, because even in a place that there's no reason for us to believe it would happen, it's become a part of the environment. And it's been, become, these threats are just a part of how we live now.
Thank you, Ms. Meesh. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Adam Rainey. Coming to you tonight as a parent of somebody at Connor High School, everybody is spot on here with what they're saying. I'm also coming to you as somebody who had the ill fortune of being on a hit list about 25 years ago. More or less the same situation. That was a different era. School shootings were not common then, one per year. They're a lot more common now. Lot more common, lot more common. So, guys, you got to take another look at this, right? The bylaws and the procedures and the smug body language ain't cutting it. Wake up. Wake up. This is a real threat. It's a real threat, guys. It's a real threat. I can talk to you about the duress a teenager feels in normal life, right? Much less, I'm talking to you from my perspective again, coming to school with a kid who wants to kill you. It's real. It's this real stuff. Wake up! Right? I mean, we can't, we can't, we can't pass the floor around. I mean, what is this kid doing in school with the kids? What is he doing there? Wake up, guys. Wake up. This is on you. You've got to do something here. You've got to do something.
Thank you, Mr. Rainey. Absolutely.
A lot of this, a lot of the issues with discipline emanated from a Senate Bill 200 in 2014. So, a lot of it's based on the law. Since that bill, discipline issues have grown and grown, and dangers have grown. So, the committee members all are very serious and one accord that this needs to be changed. So, the laws are going to be looked at, and hopefully, there'll be some positive change. So, they're working on it. They know it's at that level. It's super important. Superintendents, to some extent, are hamstrung in some issues at some times. So, there's a lot of blame to go around, but we really need to work on it at the state level, and that's what we're going to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Don't want to rush anyone or cut off conversation. But if no one else has anything else to speak, we do appreciate everyone.
And this is just for you all to write down. Please show me a statute or the rule where he is, you know, latterly, has the empowerment to make that decision. Is it not a school board decision, after a student's been either expelled or expelled, to place that student back into school? Show me the statute or show me the rules.
Hi, my name is Kristen Early. I live in Hebron, Kentucky. I'm also an employee of Connor High School. I spoke with Mr. Turner yesterday concerning this whole situation. I wanted to know why this student was allowed to be in there and why he seemed to be mattering more to everybody than the other students who have been victimized. He told me at least four times that it was all, he was bound by law, and he had to do this strictly by law. I just don't know what kind of law would put all these kids' lives in jeopardy when somebody takes something and they write it down, and they specifically say how they're going to kill people, how a law can put that boy back in school with all of these kids who feel victimized. I mean, they're terrified to be in school. They're switching out of school. They're switching classes. I don't understand why all of that is happening, and I would really like to know what law that is. And if somebody could get back to me on that, that would be great because I don't believe that there's a law that couldn't have been somehow manipulated or loophole, that we couldn't have found a better option for what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacob Saltzman. I have four kids at Boone County. None of them are at Connor. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I want to talk to the board. A mom at the very beginning said something that made me just really think. She used the word negligent, and she's exactly right. If something happens, that's back on you. If it was on Mr. Turner, if he's the one who made the decision, it's your responsibility to hold him accountable. We hold our students accountable every day. Every day in schools, when they mess up, they make wrong decisions. We learned this in SEL. There comes consequences. We have to do that to kids. That's how you learn. He's been a superintendent for how many years? Three? Not very long. There's still a learning curve. So, guess what happens? When we make decisions that aren't right, you, as the board, are the only ones who can hold him accountable. You are the only ones. We, as parents, can't. When we call, you know what ends up happening? He listens to us. He hangs up the phone. When you see him at a board, whatever it's called, where a board member gets sworn in, he doesn't talk to you. You're in a room, a 12-by-12 room. He walks right past you, doesn't talk to you. That's how he treats parents. But let me tell you how he can treat you because you are the ones who hold him accountable. So, as he's in his learning curve, and we hold students accountable for the decisions that they make, these parents, they're just asking you, as board members, to hold him accountable. That's all we want. And sometimes, it's okay to say we messed up, and we go back in and fix the problem. But in my experience of dealing with Mr. Turner and the situations that we've dealt with, I've not been told once, you know what? I messed up. Maybe I could have fixed that. Maybe I could have done that a little different. That's not what happens. You, as a parent, you just get shielded off, and then you kind of get blackballed to where when you walk in a room, he doesn't even talk to you. Hold him accountable.
Thank you, Mr. Saltzman.
Hey, can I make a comment as a Connor High School student? Because this is, it really, come up really close. I want to make a statement that is extremely disappointing about the situation with the express disturbances. I hope the safety of all students are prioritized, and the sacred learning environment is protected. I hope the community can solve this conflict promptly and keep viewing these students as full of honor, integrity, and pride that tries to set as an example through academic excellence and community service. Thank you.
Okay. I do appreciate everyone taking the time to come. Please know that you have been heard. And for any of those who did like address questions from the audience, please, you know, check in and get those over there with the nice young man over there. And get that so that we can respond to you promptly and get your questions answered and the information that you have requested. And with that, we will move on into our regular business meeting. If you were here just for this part of the meeting, please feel free to exit. We're okay with that. It's school night. We understand.
Any comments? We should at least ask. Just giving you a chance. A lot was thrown your way. Okay. That's what I expect.
Do the right thing and do it fast before something happens and it's on you.
Save the children.